We'll go ahead and call a meeting at the order. First item of business is closed meeting. Be it resolved Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711, discussion consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific officers, appointees or employees of any public body. One, the adjustment and appeals board. Two, MBC Development Corporation. Three, personnel. Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. Did you get them? Okay, very good.
It's not far from us.
Yeah. All right, Madam Secretary, if you call it, roll.
Ms. Levin?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Lott?
Aye.
Ms. Booth?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
We are in closed session.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Beeks?
Aye.
Ms. Demoss?
Aye.
Ms. Boone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Chair Fajakowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next up is certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting in this state pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Is there a motion?
There are no.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Secretary, please call or roll.
Ms. Beeks?
Aye.
Ms. Demoss?
Aye.
Ms. Boone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Fajakowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, and our county administrator will lead us. Rise for a moment of silence and then I'll lead us into the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
All right, next item is presentations, recognitions, and awards.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight we have representatives from Valley's Innovation Council to talk about Verge. And I'm not sure which ones Doug LaNerea is going to lead us off the scene. Glad to have you, Liz.
Thank you so much, Craig. I want to thank the entire board here for the opportunity to brief you tonight on the Verge, which is a nonprofit, a regional nonprofit that's committed to helping grow our region's innovation-based economy. By that I mean technology startups, jobs, that sort of thing. I'm joined by two of our board members. Got Ed Lawhorn, who most of you know. He's very involved with the Verge. And also Greg Feldman is our CEO. Has done a lot of the heavy lifting, getting the Valley's, both the Valley's Innovation Council and the Verge off the ground. And so they're just here tonight in case I need support, which I may. Just a little bit about me, just as for some context. I'm a retired serial entrepreneur. I founded and been the CEO of three technology businesses, several on the East Coast in Tidewater and then one here at Lunat Technologies when I moved here 21 years ago. For the past 20 years, what I've been doing is helping other entrepreneurs, professors, grad students, and other folks in the county and the community start technology businesses and get them scaled. Some of the names, I've worked with a lot of companies. Luna Innovations is one, probably heard of that. Webmail.us became, was acquired by Rackspace. In fact, I led the software development center there for a number of years during the heydays. And for the last 10 to 12 years, I've been working with Michael Fleming as his advisor and mentor for Toric Robotics, which is a real star in our community. So I've had the privilege of seeing a lot of success and a lot of what it takes to be successful as you start a technology business. Since I'm retired, I also volunteer on a few other boards. I'm on the State Go Virginia Board. I'm going to talk about how that relates to this presentation here in just a minute. So we're going to start, if I can figure this out, with a, let's do it this way, with a quote here. Let's read it. So the Fourth Industrial Revolution, what we're talking about is the digital revolution. And we're still in the midst of it. The digital revolution was enabled, it's hard to believe, 50 years ago with the invention of the microprocessor. You know, a few decades later, the invention and commercialization of the internet. And then following after that, proliferation of software, particularly SaaS or software applications that you have on your phone, it's changed the way we live, we work, and we play. And it's this revolution is all about what I would call the innovation-based economy. And I can tell you, there's a footrace, not just in the United States, but throughout the world, you know, because it's so easy to write an app and call it software. And many, many regions are, have latched onto this. And particularly regions that were one-time rust belt regions, they've done really, really well. And so tonight, we're going to talk, my presentation is really about how we in Montgomery County can, what we can do together to build our innovation-based economy, to expand it in the years to come, and in the process build a tremendously prosperous community. Not that we don't have one right now, but we can make it even better. So I mentioned that I was on the, and I am on the State Go Virginia Board. And 2017, 2018 recommissioned two studies, two very comprehensive studies performed by a national firm. And they did two things. The first study looked at the, basically the intellectual capital that is in Virginia. And what we're talking about is higher education, particularly STEM higher education, research. Research not just at universities, but research in federal labs such as NASA, to the Jefferson Lab, and many of the other government labs. They looked at the creation of patent creation per year, a number of factors like that. And then the second study, that was study one, and the second study followed right after was a study of the entire state's ecosystems. We're talking about the technology ecosystems. And the ability of those ecosystems to translate or commercialize and process is the way we kind of talk about more startups. You know, which regions were strong, which regions had deficits and that sort of thing. In 2018, December 2018, the consulting firm came and gave the results. And I can tell you that as a Go Virginia Board member, we were all shocked. I'm going to share with you kind of the one slide that really is the biggest takeaway. And it is kind of a wake-up call for Virginia. This is the data that came back. This is actually hard data. So if you can see, 20, 22 of the 25 largest states in terms of startup, technology startup activity. One-third the national growth rate in venture capital. And then you see some of the other disturbing, we lost 100 venture-backed firms. I know three that I was mentoring that left Blacksburg to go to other regions. And we'll talk about why they did that. And you can see the other statistics. And the one that really kind of bothered me, because I've been very involved with Virginia Tech over the years, particularly the engineering department. I was a member of the Board of Vtip, the licensing arm, for a number of years. Seventy-seven percent of the university licenses, not just from Virginia Tech, but UVA, VCU, going down the list, go, were licensed out of state firms. And that meant the jobs that got created, got created outside of Virginia. So this was kind of a wake-up call. The fortunate thing, what I would submit to all of us, here in Montgomery County, we are home to one of the top, it's one of the 10 largest engineering programs in the nation, in Virginia Tech. And at the campus, at the CRC, we're home to the state's largest technology incubator. So we have tremendous capital. But I can tell you, we, I'll show you some data here in a minute. It was taken in comparing our region, we're talking about this region right here, to other similar regions. Regions, small towns have land-grant universities with engineering programs. I'll share that data in just a minute. So we'll go to the, so about, I guess, about the same time, maybe a year before, Greg Feldman and a couple of his associates started looking at the data, the similar data in our region. And I know a number of us that were mentoring and working with startups, we saw two things. One, there was a, starting around 2010, there was a deceleration of the number of startups that we had in our region. Those emanating out of Virginia Tech were just starting up, you know, indigenously or organically. The other thing we noticed, and I noticed this, was a number of firms, startups that got started here left to go to places, New York City, Austin, of all places Chattanooga, we lost one of the ones I was mentoring. And they went there for specific reasons. And they went there because of a couple of reasons. One really had to do with critical mass of our ecosystem. We'll talk about that in just a second. So I want to show you, so what we did is we, we looked at five different communities that were somewhat similar to our community here. Lafayette, Indiana, that's the home of Purdue University, a land grant, very large engineering school. Lansing, Michigan, Michigan State, another land grant. Then we looked at Chattanooga, Tennessee, Birmingham, Alabama, which has UAB, Alabama, and Charlottesville, that's the other Virginia university. So we compared that, we were able through the Kaufman Foundation to get data to compare our region to those regions. It's really interesting. If you look on the left there, intellectual capital, this is the density of highly trained STEM people, PhD and masters in science and engineering, research expenditures, patent award. Of the five that we, of the five in our group, we were number one and number two in every one of those categories. Think of it like a funnel. You have to have the intellectual capital, and there's a process, out pops startups, out pops that create technology jobs. When you look at the outcome side, technology startup seed and venture capital investments, technology jobs, and Inc. 5000 companies, those are fast-growing companies, measured on a national scale. We were number five or number six. And that was our wake-up call, that we needed to do something in our community, in our region, to try to capitalize. It's not that we're not doing good. I mean, we're doing pretty good, but we could be doing so much better if we just worked at it. So what we did about, starting about five years ago, that led to the formation of the Valley's Innovation Council, which Greg was involved with from the beginning, was look at, really just look at the what these other communities had, these other regions had that we didn't have. And what we found is a couple of things, really. They had a structure. They had an overarching organization that drove the innovation economy, pulled all the assets together, and built, we call it ecosystem, that really was attractive, not only to starting companies, but retaining them, and in some cases bringing other companies, startups from other regions like Blacksburg to them. So we did that. And so what we found, I can tell you that the companies that I mentored that left Blacksburg, here we go. Was basically, we didn't have a lot of critical mass. Startups want to be in places where there's a lot of startups, because they feed off each other. There's, you can share ideas, share employees. They want to be, they want to go to the thing called an accelerator. An accelerator is basically a three-month intensive process where you, it's kind of a boot camp. You go through, you have learning, you discover whether you have an idea that has, can be turned into a product that somebody would buy. That's the basis of having a business, right? And then that you're prepared at the end of that process to raise capital. Enough capital, might be 50K, might be $100,000 to get that business off the ground. And all those, the ones that I mentored, the three that left, they all went to go to an accelerator. And I think the poster child was LawnStar. They left, two Virginia Tech boys, they got started here, they raised, I wrote three small checks to them. They wrote, raised money from other folks. They were going, but they wanted to go to that accelerator. They ended up in Austin. This year they'll have over 200 employees, and they will, they will probably become IPO. They will do an initial public offering in the near term. They are the Uber mowing lawns. And they could have built that right here in our community. It's sad that we didn't have these things. So anyway, we're going to move on. So five years ago, we began thinking about, what do we have to do? So we studied all these, these communities, we saw that they had accelerators, we saw that they had overarching support organizations, we saw that they had organized capital. In other words, angel capital, seed capital to get going. Because if without the capital, they'll go somewhere else and be funded. And an investor typically likes to write a check and say, well, I'll write you a check if you stay in my community and build your business here. I mean, that's what I just want to do. That's part of my motivation, investing here. I want to see my community get better. So that's, that happened. So what we did is end up founding the VIC, which now has turned into the Verge. And so what the Verge is, it's, I'm going to read this, an innovative and collaborative regional resource focused on growing the region's innovation economy and technology and life sciences. And we do a number of things, working, we've worked with Virginia Tech, we've worked with the private sector to grow the economy. And we do serve the entirety of region too, because we receive money from, monies from the state and from Go Virginia, we've seen, we've seen the grant there, a couple of grants. And then just activities, there's a lot of things we do. I'm not going to read all these things, but it has to do with, with being organized and having a one place where an entrepreneur, if he or she wants to start a technology business, they can go in there, they can find a mentor, they can go through acceleration, they can get initial seed capital to get that business off the ground. There's a plethora of things that need to happen. And we do all this here through the Verge. I show you, I can show you now our affiliates. So what we've done is we've pulled together, like all the other successful regions, we pull all the assets under one umbrella organization. We now have one board and one executive team led by Greg Feldman. Whereas before we had, we had individual stovepipe organizations. We are located, we have two offices. One, we're all together in the CRC, in the Knowledge Works Building across from Crow Grow. You're familiar with that. And we have an office with, mirrored office in downtown Roanoke on Jefferson Street in the Gill Building. And so we are really up and running in terms of the things that we do. The Valley's Innovation Council or VIC, it basically provides the vision, the strategy, and resources. So I can tell you a story, before what we were doing with the RBTC, the Tech Council and the Ramp, it was just getting started, we raised all of our funding in region. You're very limited when you do that. There's a lot of state money and federal money you just have to go after. The Ramp is the accelerator. The RBTC, many of you know, maybe you've been to some of the tech nights. It basically is networking, it's education, and it's celebration of success. And again, I'm not going to go back all through these, but these are some of the things that the Valley's Innovation Council does. Again, kind of creating an overarching strategy and the tactics and the funding for the whole group to move forward. Ramp is accelerating young companies. What I can tell you about economic development now, there's a lot of regions that realize if you can get a startup, if you can get a company right when they're starting and they build their roots in your community, they're not going to go anywhere. It's almost, it's almost economic development turned on its head. You know, where you go out typically, you know, if you look at our traditional economy, we want a large company, want the governor to come here and announce 200 jobs, right? A lot of, in the fourth generation, the fourth, in the fourth wave, the digital, the digital revolution, this is what's happening. You're recruiting companies as, at the time they're getting formed. So what we do, there's two cohorts per year. These cohorts go through a three-month intensive process. We've got 27 startups so far. Okay, it's a small, it's a small start, but it's the start. And we have a number of them that have, are gaining success. I can tell you, I mentored one called Render. So two Virginia Tech students, they went through it last summer. And they just are in the process of closing on a $1 million seed round to get going. And they're building a nice facility over in the Corporate Research Center. They build laser, portable laser engravers and cutters. So this is an example, maybe another torque one day, you know. But it takes a lot of these startups before, you know, you get a torque or a company like that grows to that kind of scale. Yep. The RBTC, again, this is, this is mentoring, this is education, this is communications. One of the other things we do in the Verge is we also, if you're going to be successful, you have to communicate your successes to the outside world. I mentioned Chattanooga there. And I don't think any of you would think of Chattanooga as being particularly, you know, highly intellectual or yeah, progressive community. But what they did was, the community got together, the leaders, the town got together, and they tend to But what they did was the community got together, the leaders, the, the town got together and they, I tend to, a decade ago, they funded a one gigabit internet. And then they went on this huge marketing campaign that said, hey, we're cool, come here and build your, your software startup. People started coming. So it's that whole thing about communication. And we lost one of our startups to, to downtown Chattanooga. So it, you know, you have to do all these things. You have to tell your story, you have to get it out, out there in the world. Everybody's trying to do the same thing we're trying to do. So again, the funny model, right now fifty percent of our budget comes from the state, federal and, and national grants. And that includes Go Virginia, the U S E D A, V I P A. I didn't mention V I P A, but out of the, these two reports that the Go Virginia funded, it resulted in the formation of the Virginia Innovation Partnership Authority. It stood up last year. Of course, the COVID kind of hits, there's not been a lot of, not a lot of news on it. But its role is at a state level to do what, what we're doing with The Verge region. And that is to create the infrastructure, create the sources of capital, network all the accelerators, build an organization that can drive Virginia's innovation based economy. It's going to be sister to the V E D P, the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, which works very closely with Onward N R V as an example. But what I will tell you in the future, when you talk about onward, onward N R V, they do a great job, we need them. But a- as this revolution continues and evolves, firms, you want to recruit a firm that has a technology component to it, they're going to want to see a vibrant, by vibrant, I mean, big. Lot of things happening, lots of folks doing lots of things in a community that they would choose to move to. So it's, it goes hand in glove, you know, recruitment and having a vibrant innovation based economy in the future is going to be ever more important. So then we raised fifty percent within the region. We have a number of municipalities that are on board and supporting. We have a lot of members and we have a lot of corporate and individual investors. And for the first time, before the Tech Council ramp, accelerator, really, we're never able to raise money in a broad base. We have car dealerships, we have home builders now that are, that are chipping in investment money to help drive this economy. Because it, it, as we grow it, it benefits everybody. People buy cars, they buy homes, you know, it's, it's a good thing for the entire community. So I'll end with a quote. I thought this was an interesting one. Says, hey, we got to, we, we have to work together. We want to build our future. Because this industrial revolution is moving, it's moving whether we join it or not. And so I'll leave you with that. The last thing here is contact, have questions, please reach out to Greg Feldman, who's our CEO. Or, or any one of us and we'll get you to Greg and Greg will like give you an answer. So I, I don't know if I've run over my time, but if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer, answer them. But I think what we will do, we'd like to come back, Craig, at some point and make a formal ask. And you know, maybe a work session might be the proper place to do it because we would share budgets and things like that and get, you know, look under the, under the hood a little bit. And, and open being like this kind of limited time target to do. But we would hope that perhaps the, the board here might be amenable to, to thinking about working with us to build our, our collective future. So with that, that's. Does anyone have any questions?
I was just going to ask, what municipalities do you have right now that are working with you?
We have the city of Roanoke, county of Roanoke, Salem, Otatot, tell me up Greg. Blacksburg.
Has participated in Montgomery, has been supportive in the past of R B T C and in various ways, sponsorships and that sort of thing.
Yeah, we're just, you know, we've been very deliberate rather than just, we wanted to put the organization together, show some success. And then, you know, expand the M R L up some.
So are they investing funds?
Yes, it, it's, it's typically an annual contribution. You know, much like probably what you do with, but not, not to the magnitude of what you would do with All of N R V. It's, it's similar to that. It's, it's investing in, in building startups in your region that creates economic vitality.
And my second question, you talked a lot about the CRC. So when you're talking about startups, is your vision that they will all be in the CRC? Or is your vision that they could be elsewhere?
They could be anywhere in Blacksburg. There's a lot of startup activity right now in downtown Blacksburg. But as I, I'd say probably the majority in, in our region, our region is region two of Virginia, it goes from Lynchburg through the New River Valley. I would say the preponderance though would be in the New River Valley between Blacksburg and, and the CRC. It depends, you know, if you want to have, companies of scale tend, tend to want to be more in the CRC. And there's a lot of little tiny startups downtown Blacksburg right now. They're just above bars and restaurants and things like that. But yes, and what I would submit to everybody here is when you build a, an ecosystem, bigger is better. In other words, people want to go where there's a lot of activity because they want to share their problems and their opportunities with other, other firms, similar firms.
Thank you. Similar question, but with higher education. So where, who are you working with in higher education?
Okay, so we work with the Office of Research and Innovation at Virginia Tech. Doctor, Dr. Lee. Dan Sweet, I'm sorry, yeah. He is on our board, he's on the, the Verge board. And what we do there is, and the state is now starting to fund, we call last dollar of proof of concept money. So let's say you have a grad student or a grad, a professor that has very, very promising technology. Maybe some research that came out of NSF or NASA, D O D or whatever. He or she wants to maybe thinks, thinks it has a commercial opportunity. We began to work with that researcher. And one of the things is, you know, get him through the accelerator, get him some money. We're doing a lot of that in, in Roanoke with the Frayland Bio, Biotechnic, Bi- Bi-Medical Research Center. There's a number of companies now that are coming out and getting funded. And they're building both, you know, downtown Roanoke, they, they'll come to Virginia Tech too because there's, there's more critical mass of highly trained people in some cases, on the bio side. So.
In addition to Virginia Tech, Ranford, College, all of the community colleges. In fact, all the trade college presidents are on the verge of, so that's an important workforce. You know, group that feeds into these companies. Pretty much all of the, the, in the regional footprint, colleges and universities have some tangency. And many of them have their own entrepreneurship programs or whatnot and we lead in and help them.
Absolutely. I would think that would be a great pool, resource pool for you, especially STEM programs and such, to bring those new recruitments and new students or new young people that have those great ideas to.
You might be interested since you asked the question, we track the number of STEM graduates as one of the metrics that we look at in the region. Well, close to ten thousand years STEM and health related graduates in the region. But many of those people are recruited away from the region. We're educating them, but they're backing up and going elsewhere. So part of the challenge is trying to sync that up with available opportunities here and awareness of companies here. Because many are small to midsize, below the radar, don't have formal recruitment and H R departments and mechanisms that gain the same note of writing. So that's one small example. We run a program called the Elite Program that matches college and workforce, could be apprentice folk too. We have companies that have software development needs. And we, through a partnership, provide a team leader. And they actually do work while they're still in, say, in school for these companies. So the companies get visibility on some prospective pipeline of workers. And on flip side, the students or predecessors get notches on their belt having completed something in Python or you know, that kind of programming language, which checks the box for them and makes it more employable at the end of the day.
That's what I'd like to hear as a daughter that's in STEM. I, I would love for her to be, have a grad, grad reeks and stay here.
Absolutely. It's, we have, you know, you talk about intellectual capital, ten thousand STEM graduates a year come out of region two. Actually, we only retain five hundred. It's a shame, but we have, most regions that have vibrant tech, tech and innovation based economies would, would die to have what we have. We just, we just have to try a little bit harder.
I was in a meeting last week where the lady, her name escapes me, that kind of oversees ramp.
Mary Miller.
Good presentation. Very good presentation, kind of just like yours about her, that program, I guess, you could call it that accelerator. Good information for me because I had never heard of anything like that. But anyway, of course, the, the discussion came down to, did I think the county would be willing to give them some funding? You know, ten, twenty thousand dollars and, and I thought it kind of guided her how she need to go about doing that. I guess my question is, the funds that you would be requesting, would they be dispersed amongst these groups? So they would go to.
Yes. Yes. I mean, so same thing with the R B T C, the R B T C, the Tech Council. It has, it has a membership structure. So if you want to be a member, you just, you provide them a membership fee. But they raise funds also for, for, we have large things called Fall Gala and Tech Night where four or five hundred people show up. And you can pay a sponsor, you know, be a sponsor, add your name up on lights and the lights, that's what we think. So there's other ways to, you can invest, there's other ways you can participate. But yeah, one, one of the things that we want to do and we are beginning to do with The Verge is there'll be one ask. Instead of three different groups coming and asking for money, just one. That's what, and again, that's what we saw in the, the most successful communities that have thriving innovation based economies. They have been consolidated all this, one, two, one work, it worked in concert rather than everybody working against each other. You know, I gave five thousand dollars to that, that guy that's in your group, but I'm not going to give you the five thousand, right? You have a question?
I have two. And I ran through your program just to make sure I didn't miss it. Are you incorporated as a five oh one C three?
The Verge, the Valleys Innovation Council, which is the operating arm of The Verge, is a five oh one C three. The Tech Council is a five oh one C six, a membership board. So any, obviously any donations or investments that we take are, you know, are taxed, taxed no way. Or not problem. I mean, it's.
Do you overlap with the S B D C at all?
No, but we work hand in glove with them. They, they make referrals to us, we make referrals to them. We've worked, I think, on grants, have we worked on grants together with them?
Looked at some together, not executed one yet. But one of the things that in our CRC office, we've tried to co-locate as many resources and create a nexus for, so people can easily find one another and if there's an opportunity to refer back and forth, we can do that more readily. Same sort of thing in the Gill Building in downtown Roanoke, although they physically, in, in that case, located in the chamber there for various reasons, but you know, just down the street.
Well, and you touch on kind of the reason that I asked that question in the first place is because there's so many different organizations doing not the same, but similar work that it's, I think, to everybody's biggest advantage when there's some overlap or some collaboration. And so you're talking about startups, well, the S B D C is an obvious marriage for some of them.
And we do refer back and forth, but our swim lane really is the tech startup that is scalable, that has a national or international market that they're trying to access as opposed to your company that may be more local market based and more dependent on a local market.
So April, you bring up a very good point because in a lot of the most successful, Austin being one, they locate the Chamber, the S B D C, the Jobs, the Onward N R V, The Verge. It's all in one building. It's a multi-story building and they're all there because to your point, somebody comes through, that you can get them to that person that can help them rather than say, well, you know, you go across town and it's over there.
Exactly.
Not a side out of mind. Then you miss, you miss the connections. It's all about having the best handles.
Right.
Seamless and not letting anything slip through the cracks.
So Virginia Tech Knowledge Works was supposed to do something like this.
They did, and they, they, they did, they, they were prototypical, I think. And I was the entrepreneur in residence at Knowledge Works for many years. But what I would say is that they were looking really at just the ecosystem of the CRC. And we look at the region, I mean, all of Montgomery County, that would include Blacksburg, that would include downtown Roanoke. Again, it's, if you want to grow an ecosystem, if you make the entire region better, by that I'm saying like our airport. You know, we have, be able to get in and out. So as we can improve the entire area, it earns us the benefit of all.
Is B T Knowledge Works still in existence?
No, it's, Jim Flowers retired. He was wonderful. He was, I think, kind of his time. And now they have, in the same space, they have CoGrow. They have a few startups and across the hall from CoGrow is The Verge and all of our offices. Also, S B D C is located there, the B T C, the Virginia Tech Coralian Seed and Fund is located there. So we have, we're beginning to put the pieces all together to try to capture, you know, all these opportunities and not see.
Onward N R Vs just around the corner.
Yep, and exactly right, right. Onward, onward is just over the lake there.
So we're already contributing to the R B T C. We would no longer contribute to them, we would just contribute to the.
In the future, what we would do, yes, yes, we would come to you with one ask in the future. And rather than, you know, except like Mary Miller asking for, could I come? The R B T C and then the, The Verge of the Valleys Innovation Council coming out, you know, after that. Be one ask for the whole, the whole function.
And you've already had that ask with Badatot, with Roanoke County, and they've already signed up for something that is, should be equivalent across the board or what you're hoping to be.
There, we have, City of Roanoke is providing some, has provided significant support in terms of cash and income.
Is it mostly cash or is it mostly?
Yeah.
It's about an even split between cash and income.
How much? I'm sorry.
About sixty five thousand between the two pieces.
Gotcha.
Because they give us some space on an income basis to actually run the accelerator program.
So your earlier slide about the report, the analysis, all of those places are cities. And here we are, Montgomery County, hundred thousand, we just broke a hundred thousand. I mean, Chattanooga is a city, Lansing is a city, U V A, okay. That, that's comparable. But where in the U S has this actually been successful with a county or region like us?
So what I would, so I would, what I would say here, some of these, I think Lafayette, Indiana and Lansing, Michigan are fairly small.
They're pretty darn big.
Well, you talk about the greater, the greater.
Yeah. Well, I mean, Blacksburg, CRC, that's what, thirty thousand people?
Blacksburg's about forty, I think forty thousand, forty five thousand residents, I think. We have, what do we have?
One way I would think about it, perhaps helps address your question, we've got a population in region two, about three quarters of a billion. And I think that one of the common denominators and the reason that those places were chosen is because they have a presence of a research university, which is in today's time, you know, a really important asset to drive innovation economy. Because you do have translational research going on that can potentially be commercialized, either through a startup or through licensing. And so I think, you, you know, if you were to talk to someone in, in a startup world or a tech company looking, they look at regional assets in a larger and, you know, an hour drive is nothing. Because they're comparing, you know, areas like this to places where an hour commute or longer is, you know, the norm. If you were in the Bay Area, it'd be worse, even parts of Northern Virginia. So they tend to look at a, a kind of a bigger circle. But a key driver and a key common denominator of this group is the presence of our, our own kind of research university. And Chattanooga is really the only exception. They've got a, U T C is a, they do some research, but it's much more modest in size and scale. I mean, tech does a little over half a billion a year in, in research. So they'd be in the forties in the national ranking, for example.
Last question. You said that wanted to have a vibrant community. Actually, is this a trick or a question? No conversation about retaining young professionals, having a young professionals community so they actually have stuff to do. Nothing like that. You, you're focusing on work, what about the quality of life that people are really looking, you know, looking for too. Because we work to, you know, we work to live, not live to work, kind of thing.
I think you're exactly right. And start, what I was saying is that startups, if they want to, to locate, to organically grow, stay or even be attracted to a community, they're looking for a vibrant ecosystem. That ecosystem not only includes things I was talking about, what they need to build a business, but it does include the amenities in life. Now, what I can tell you is the R B T C kind of is that social network gathering part of, of The Verge. And we, we do have a lot of, lot of activities, a lot of meetups, things like that, creates that sense of community. And we do have a lot of, lot of activities, a lot of meetups, things like that. Creates that sense of community. We've gone a long ways ago. I'll submit that. Your, our, our, our community does. But look, I think if you have, if you have the the engine drive, you have a vibrant innovation based economy. I think over time, the rest will take care of itself.
And then the last thing is, this is nothing new, right? We've been, you've been doing this for the last thirty years or twenty, whatever years. What hasn't been there is the V C money. And the V C money really still isn't here, you know? I mean, there's some, but never the mass that we really need, right? So I understand the model of, you know, pulling in money from elsewhere, but we've been trying to do that for a long time.
Yeah, I I've been part of several startup. I can go back, tell you all of the angel groups that we formed and then disbanded. But we now under verge, we're working with Commonwealth Angels. This is one of the first organized angel capital group that's working with with the verge. Greg does a lot of the meetings. We host them. And so the first time we now have organized capital, we also have the B T C fund, the seed fund and the baby angel series A. Never had this before.
That's great.
And then the other thing we're doing with the state through the Virginia Innovation Partnership Authority is now networking with all the other sources of capital state. Whole idea is just don't let any good startup leave our state like.
That's great.
It's just, it's a shame.
It's great to hear.
We started it. It's our own people and then they leave.
Well, thank you very much. It was a very good presentation. I would like to ask the board if there's consensus to revisit this, maybe later on in the year, maybe this fall or winter. When you have more idea of what we're looking at as far as budget, is there consensus to do that?
Very much.
Thank you very much.
Good questions.
See you. Thanks very much.
All right, next item up is a public hearing. This is for the fiscal year twenty two budget amendment.
Chair, this is required by statute. Anytime we have an amendment to the annual budget that is more than one percent of the total expenditures. We have an item underneath business this evening that's to reappropriate capital and project funds for the schools. It's about thirty million dollars. And so in total with that and items of consent this evening, we have about thirty six million dollars in reappropriation. So we're required to have a public hearing for that item.
All righty, thank you. We have nobody signed up for the budget amendment hearing. But if anyone would like to come forward, you have four minutes. Saying no one come forward, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Next item up is public address. And if anyone, no, no one has signed up for public address. If somebody would like to come forward and speak, you have four minutes. No one come forward, I am going to close public address. Brings us to addendum.
Addendum this evening, sir.
No addendum. Next item is our items of consent. Is there a motion? You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Secretary, go ahead and call the roll.
I'm. Mr. Shepherd.
Hi.
Miss Levens.
Aye.
Aye.
Miss Bates.
Aye.
Chair Pichakowski.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
I can't believe it.
Well, that's because we ask all those questions.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that was set up. Failure.
I probably went ahead of time to answer my questions.
Okay, our next item is new business.
Yeah, only item we have this evening underneath business is budget amendment for the carry forward of school capital projects balances and school capital projects encumbrances. I believe the vast majority of this is related to the three school projects in Christiansburg Strand. In order for them to be able to pay bills in the new year, we need to carry those encumbrances forward.
So moved second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Miss Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Miss Levens.
Aye.
Miss Bates.
Aye.
Miss Demonts.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chair Pichakowski.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, leads us to our reports. First up is our county attorney.
I have no report today.
No report. Okay, how about our county administrator?
I'm just coming back from a week of vacation, so I'm still digging out. I don't have anything to report tonight other than I am very glad to have Amy Marshall with us tonight covering the big step. Wish I knew who was willing to help us out.
Very good. All right, we'll go down through the board. First up Supervisor Bone.
I just wanted to share the fact that there is a dialogue on race summer summit on Saturday, August twenty eighth at four P M. At the Moose Lodge. Whenever I've attended them, they've been outstanding. So I highly encourage everyone to attend.
All right, thank you very much. Supervisor Shepherd. No report. Supervisor King. No report. Supervisor Levens.
I no report, but I wanted just to remind folks and say a couple shout outs first of all to Christiansburg Colonnus for their donations for children, supplies for children elderly to the department, to the Department of Social Services. Greatly appreciate those donations. Wanted to congratulate Mr. Meadows on his election as president for the Virginia Local Government Management Association. Very good of all you do here and for the state of Virginia as well. Appreciate that. And wanted to remind everyone that this Saturday, the thirty first, is the guns and hoses softball tournament at Christiansburg Rec Center. And that's for the Special Olympics and a good shout out to Jeremy Williams that will be representing his team for the firefighters. And Tyler Joseph that will be representing the police officers for the guns and appreciate everyone to come out and to support that.
Very good. Supervisor Demonts.
At our last meeting, I, in my report, I mentioned, I'd like for everybody to reach out to Parks and Rec. And I, I think everybody has seen the emails following up, but that issue has been resolved. We will be able to have fall basketball using Montgomery County Public Schools facilities. So I appreciate everybody's support and encouragement to resolve that.
I I didn't get copied done, resolution to that.
Uh, the resolution was just Tommy actually reached out to Mitchell and said, we're good to go, that that is definitely going to happen. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, April. Yeah.
And that's all that I have.
All right. Vice Chair Biggs.
I was glad that was resolved too. I think it's really important for the kids, so. Um, I also want to congratulate Craig because I know how challenging that this year is going to be for you.
Already added to the email.
Yeah, yeah, because it's one thing when you're just sort of with your own, you know, individual county. But when you're responsible, in your cases, like towns and cities and county, the minute, you know, all those people.
Don't always agree on a lot of things.
Yeah, yeah. So congratulations and, um, yeah. It's well deserved. You know, you've been working with that group for a long time. And the only other thing I have to tell you all, I sent you earlier a link for a news story on the Executive Airport. And the, are the, you know, the Virginia Tech Montgomery Executive Airport. And it deals with the expansion of the runway and the impact on businesses. And it was really well done. So I want you to have that. And that's all.
Brings it up to me now. I want to start off by thanking all of you for the for the lovely flowers that you were sent, that you sent to comfort my family during a very bad time for us. And your thoughts and prayers were definitely appreciated. You know, death is one of those things. It seems that only time can heal, so. We hope that time will move quicker just so that we can heal quicker. But thank you again for all that. We really appreciated it. I also wanted to make mention of this, that apparently a couple of weeks ago, there was a Facebook comment that came from the Montgomery County Public Schools that kind of raised some eyebrows. It it goes, our meetings are typically held in the boardroom at the county government center. The closure of the boardroom for six months came as quite a surprise. We were provided less than one week's notice for this change. Now our meetings are held in the P D room at the operations center until the renovation is complete. This room does not have capabilities for video live stream. School board has asked for a quote on upgrading the P D room for video live stream capabilities. Brought that to the superintendent's attention, so he issued this correction. It says, the notification regarding the closure of the boardroom was provided on June fifteenth, stating that the boardroom would be closed starting in July. The school board held a meeting in the boardroom on June fifteenth and their next in-person meeting was held on July thirteenth at the P D center. I just, I wanted to make mention of it just in case somebody didn't see that correction to know that our county administration did what they were supposed to do. And it's been resolved. So there it is. That's, I think, all I have today. And I was hoping to be Vice Chair Biggs' record for early meeting, but alas, I was sabotaged.
You organize that.
We will now call a meeting adjourned.